Three, two, one, go ahead.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the September 8th River Falls City Council meeting. First thing we'll do is say the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag.
States of America.
And to the Republic.
Which it stands.
Which it stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all. For all.
Okay, Christie, can you do the roll call, please?
Sure, Mr. Beerstead.
Here.
Downing.
Here.
Downing.
Here.
Gagne.
Here.
Morissette.
Here.
Plunkett.
Here.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, next round of approval of the minutes from the August 18th meeting and the August 25th meeting.
I move approval.
Second.
Okay, Christie, first we have first and second, any comments from the council members? Christie, we have first and second on the meeting. For the meeting minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Odine.
Hi.
Watson.
Hi.
Gagne.
Hi.
Morissette.
Hi.
Downing.
Hi.
Beerstead.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. John, is there anybody there for public comments? Or Jason? Sorry, Jay?
Is that up here?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, to do.
The bill.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Morissette. Oh, I'm sorry, geez, I want, hey, hang on one, one second for public comments. I went right over the approval of the bill. Go ahead, Mr. Morissette.
Mayor and council, I make a motion, we approve the $1,587,028.75 subject to the comptroller.
Second.
Okay, Christie, we have first and second on the bills.
Start with Ms. Odine.
Hi.
Downing.
Hi.
Set.
Hi.
Gagne.
Hi.
Watson.
Hi.
Beerstead.
Hi.
Plunkett.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, my apologies. Now, now it's time for public comments.
Yep, it's all unmuted, ready to go.
Okay, thank you, John.
Benjamin Fox, 2529 Powell Avenue. I didn't make a comment last week or two weeks ago because there's a lot of people outside and well, I go to a lot of these meetings, so I was able to explain to some of the residents that were sitting outside the doors what was going on and such, so. I would like to thank the council for finally passing the future land use for Man Valley property. There's been a lot of complaints about not planning for it, but in the CIP, it's always been pushed back, pushed back, pushed back. So it's good to finally see things that have been sitting there for two years passed. And as to that, I have concerns, future-wise, is that in passing TID 16, the property lines are completely zigzagged and everything else, and so I don't know what the process is to clean up a TID boundary. And then, just generally, you know, if we're gonna have parks and such like that, what is the planning process to, you know, push that River Falls Economic Development Corporation, do their, do their due diligence to do corporate and parks and stuff like that? To push it to the park or to figure out what their future plans are for that regional park? Is the sanctus truly a regional park or is the Man Valley the Northwest Regional Park and such? And just, you know, the planning process is now behind the actions. And it's gonna be hard with COVID and everything else to get new CIP and everything else processes. And then also, the votes are much improved in the digital last week. By switching to a different process. And I think that'll be all enough for this week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Is there, is there anybody else?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, nobody, nobody called in, John?
No, I didn't receive any notifications about people wanting to speak.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, let's move on to the consent agenda. First, we have an acknowledgement of the following minutes. We have the joint meeting of the Park and Recreation Advisory Board and the Historic Preservation Commission from 3:11. We have the Park and Recreation Advisory Board from 7:15. We have the River Falls Housing Authority from 7:15. We have the EMS Advisory Board from 2:03. We have the Planning Commission from 3:09. We have the Board of Review from 8:06. We have the Library Board from 7:13. The next thing is a resolution approving advanced disposal contract extension. This resolution would approve a five-year extension for weekly garbage and recycle pickup along with other services from advanced disposal. And the last thing is a preliminary resolution declaring intent to exercise special assessment, police powers under Section 66 dot 0703 Wisconsin statutes for the benefit of River Falls Business Improvement District. Does anybody want to pull anything?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to pull consent agenda item number three, resolution approving advanced disposal contracts.
Okay. Anything else?
I was gonna pull the same thing, but I'll make my comments at the same time, Sean.
Okay, I'll take a motion on everything else.
Could I just ask a point of clarification? Preliminary resolution declaring intent, is that, is that essentially a first reading or is that, I'm not sure what that means?
Among other things, it's at the hearing.
Yeah, I think this, this, this thing, then they'll send this out to all the businesses telling them what we're gonna do. So then, in October, they'll come back for a public hearing on it.
If you, with, this isn't a resolution though, right? Or it isn't an ordinance, it's already, the ordinance is already in place.
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Morissette, this is, this is part of the, the legal process for levying those assessments on property owners, so essentially you're giving them a notice under the statutes that, so this is a resolution. Letting them know that you're considering doing that and then it lays, then we'll go through a process where we lay out what the proposed assessment is for each property and there'll be a list that's provided and then comes back for further action by the council.
I appreciate the clarification, I just, I guess I'd never seen, I probably have, I just hadn't noticed it before, that it was a preliminary resolution rather than, I guess I was used to the first and second reading when it comes to ordinances, so that's why I was a little confused. Sorry. With, with that, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items two, A through G, and four.
First, we got first and second, any comments from the council? Christie, we have a first and a second on agenda, on consent agenda item two, A through G, and number four.
Hey, a vote on this would be to approve the consent agenda except for number three. Gagne?
Yes.
Plunkett?
Hi.
Beerstead?
Hi.
Set?
Hi.
Downing? Odine?
Hi.
Watson?
Hi.
Seven zero in favor.
Thank you, Christie. Okay, Mr. Downing, you pulled number three.
Resolution approving advanced disposal contract. I just want to talk a little bit about a history over this last year and three months. I've been trying to help find ways of improving city services regarding recycling technology as well as improving and stabilizing our costs or bringing it potentially down. So I've been, I've been working on ways of finding, bringing the cost of our contract down and saving money while improving some of these services and I've worked with the city staff to this capacity as well. I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you to their, to our city staff who worked with me. And working during this time has made it difficult to discover and find opportunities for savings and improvements, and we worked hard to do that. Unfortunately, the reality is there's not much competition right now. And the rate is jumping from our current rate of $14.40 to $17 in 2021, which is a significant jump for some in what our taxpayers pay for the service. I've been looking at strategies and ways of expanding the service while saving money. However, this market, this year, this year in particular, has made it difficult to find better service or cost savings. And from what I can tell, this is the best option that we have at this moment on the table. I would prefer to not get locked into five-year contracts, however, if we don't, we might actually end up paying more without an immediate viable strategy. I work with the city staff and members and reviewed opportunities and partnerships with our local, other local entities, so for me, I think this is, this is probably as good as it gets. I always try to keep an open mind in how we can do things better, but I'd like an opportunity to hear from our city administrator and his opinion on how and why the prices got to where they are in our current economy and some, and some of the difficulties we're having securing a better contract.
Mr. Mayor, do you want me to address that first or?
Yeah, go ahead. Excuse me.
Yeah. So thank, thank you, council member, yeah, we, as council members indicated, we, we spent a good amount of time looking at some electronic recyclables and other, other ideas that the council member had. We also discussed in some detail answering questions from council member Downing, which I've, we've had from other council members in the past about some options we might have for going to something like bi-weekly recycling, which could reduce the price a bit. Or, or trying to change some of the collection maximums, minimums, or charging a specific amount. What we found is the price is driven primarily by some fixed costs, the route-based costs, the tonnage is not necessarily the big issue on garbage, although it certainly does play a role. On recycling, the market is really significantly changed over the last few years. And I think we were the beneficiaries in pretty good contract language that we had locked in, even while the markets for recycling and that were failing pretty fast. And in fact, we did take the approach in this contract to try not to get locked into too much fluctuation and put the risk on the hauler. So I think that, that's generally what Mr. Downing was talking about. There is, in fact, that the real question for the council, which is a, a good policy question for you all, is if you're comfortable not going out with formal bid process, and so we did, as staff, do some analysis based on other contracts. Tried to put the city in the best position that we could. Certainly, we could have gone out for bid. In this market, we believe there's likely only two players that would be able to bid and produce the service level that, that we've expected. In fact, we have some difficulty even it's, we may not have been able to get in an open bidding process, the large item or the fall and spring cleanups included. And also, contract waste haulers are trying to move away from individual park. Refuse and recycling pickup, which we have included in our contract pretty successfully, although we do have some service spots here and there with that, but that was very valuable, we thought, to the city and its residents, so given the competitive landscape in the market, we thought negotiating a renewal with advance was in our best interest. So that's what's presented for the council.
Thanks, Mr. Simpson.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep, hang, hang on a second. Sean, did you want to make a motion on this?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve consent agenda item number three.
Okay, go ahead.
Second.
Mr., I'm, I'm sorry. So we got a first and a second?
Yeah. Mr. Gagne wanted to speak.
Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Gagne, yes, you wanted to say something.
I had a question for Scott or Kevin if he's on. Are we, so I know previously, when we first got into this contract, Advanced Disposal, I believe, was doing the customer service and the collection, but then that switched back to the City Hall doing, our utility staff at the city doing the customer service, is that still the case?
Correct, yeah, we're, we are doing the collection and then remitting a monthly check to, to the contractor.
So if somebody has a concern or a question, they're calling City Hall and not Advance directly?
They still have the option to call Advance, my understanding from an operational standpoint, but at the end of the day, we're the, we are the biller, so we are as we, as we have frankly, even when we weren't the biller, trying to take responsibility for, for the customer service concerns. Kevin, I don't know if you have something to add on that?
Um, no, and that we're correctly then with Advanced Disposal, who has been in the last two years extremely responsive, so they'll get a call in, email or text, and usually within an hour or two, we get a response back to take care of issues locally, so that's how that's working. So we, we'd advise customers to call City Hall. Then we'll, we'll contact the hauler themselves to take care of issues that arise.
Awesome, and that was the biggest point I wanted to make. I appreciate the staff's work on that because I know that they get quite a few calls. And there's quite a presence when something doesn't go right. But sometimes they don't get the presence or the, the pat on the back when they do a great job, so. That being said, I've had a couple communications regarding, hey, one gets missed, right, from a neighborhood garbage collection, and they seem like the staff gets on it and Advance comes back and picks it up pretty quick. I know they're kind of on a timeframe to get it all done in one day because they have different contracts outside of just the city of River Falls, and they got a big city here to take care of, so. I appreciate the work they've done up to this point and the work that the staff does to make sure that we're providing a, a quality and superior service, so kudos.
Anybody else have anything on this one?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I've got.
Yep, go ahead, Mr. Plunkett.
Uh, thank you. Questions, a, a number of them regarding the recycling. Starting out with the wording on 2.6, top of page six. Looking at duh, 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 the hauler shall collect three through seven plastic containers if no market exists for these materials. Haulers may dispose of these items at a landfill facility. Seems to be in conflict with the wording in section 3.11 on the bottom of page eight. Then as we look at section 5.4 in the current contract, I noticed that they're using $4.75 as a basis for increased fuel costs. Our current fuel costs for diesel are less than half that. And then as we get into 6.3, reporting, I'd like to see some numbers here before we vote on this. Regarding what we are collecting for recycled materials in River Falls. How many of those recycled materials are going into landfills? And what is the market value of the materials that are being collected here in the city?
Councilman Plunkett, this is Kevin Westhouse. We do have Jim Smith, district manager from Advanced Disposal along mine, as long, as well as Bob Fister, he's the marketing manager from the Midwest. And Jim Smith might be able to shed some light on how much of that material is making it to the recycling center and how much of it is making it to the landfill? And then the whatever, the ever-evolving, you can pick it up this week, you can't pick it up next week. So, Jim, do you want to chime in on that a little bit about the recycling and where that's at today?
Um, the recycling all goes to, is collected and goes to the, to the MRF here in Twin Cities. All products that have a market are, are recycled. The processing cost obviously has, has increased dramatically. And also, the value of each of the commodities has reduced significantly over the last few years. Bob can actually probably shed some better light on the, I'll say, world economy on the, on recycling process. I don't have the numbers and percentages at the top of my, my head, but, but Kevin, I can get those for you heck tomorrow.
Ben, we will gather that exact data and then pass that along to you?
But I think we should, that, before we vote on this contract, that particularly in River Falls with our commitment to being a green city, I'm very concerned that a number of the materials that are being recycled here are being contaminated in the single-stream hauling process. Reducing the value of the recycling and making it an energy cost and not an energy savings as well as limiting materials that are available for domestic production of goods rather than exporting overseas low-value glass contaminated with paper and limiting a material stream for domestic production to support our American economy. Thank you.
Yeah. Bob? Bob, do you want to, Bob, do you want to shed new light on that, Bob Fister, from Advanced Disposal?
Hi, good evening, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you well.
Bob, now you're, now you're muted. Mr. Plunkett, I can answer some, a couple other questions you had to related to contract language.
So Bob, we could hear you, now we can't hear you, so check your mute button.
About now, can you hear me?
Yes, you're good, Bob.
All right, I apologize for the, for the problems here. Let me try to shed a little light and answer some of those questions that you, you've asked. As far as the amount of material that is taken out of River Falls, as Jim mentioned, all of the recycling that we pick up in single-stream goes to a single-stream processing facility, none of it goes to the landfill. We take about 90 tons of recycling a month out of River Falls and conversely, we take about 225 tons of refuse out of River Falls. I don't believe we've seen an inordinate amount of contaminants from River Falls compared to any other community. The contamination rate is about 16 to 20% on an industry average. I, I don't know that it's any different than that, I, I don't have any specific information for that. As far as the cost of processing recycling, that's between $45 and $50 a ton cost right now that we have. And it's basically, it started when China basically shut the doors. And then with the COVID crisis we had, it was kind of exacerbated because we had more people that were staying at home. So we had more recycling. So we have a glut right now, and so the commodity values, although we see, we saw like OCC go up in May, it's come right back down in August, so. I know that's a quick answer, but I'm, I'd like to, to see if, if I've answered your question, I hope I have.
Ben, did that help at all? I know that might have not been right on target, but hit the blue ring maybe.
Let me clarify some of those numbers that you gave me. You said that it's currently costing you $50 a ton for approximately 90 tons per month of materials out of River Falls. So $4,500 per month in costs on processing. And you're not paying anything to landfill it because you just told me that zero, and I quote, zero of that material is going to a landfill. Frankly, I find that a little bit hard to believe. And I don't appreciate getting gas-lamped as a member of the council here regarding what happens at your single-stream collection facility. I think that honesty from people presenting before the council is a very important thing. And I am well aware of what happens at single-stream recycling facilities. Zero of that going to a landfill is frankly not believable and not honest before this council. But let's continue. So $4,500 a month in processing costs, and we're looking at Mr. Simpson, how many residential accounts are we looking at here in the city?
Kevin, do you have a more precise number than 5,000, 6,000-ish?
It's about, it's about 6,500, Ben.
About 6,500, so at a $4 a month increase per residential accounts, we're looking at approximately $28,000 a month in increased costs for the residents of the city versus a $4,500 cost of processing that 90 tons of materials. I guess that would explain the rise in advanced disposal stock price from October of 2016 at $20 a share to the current price of $30 a share. Yes, I would, before I vote on this, I would certainly be very, very interested in looking at the materials collected in River Falls. Those values that should have been monthly reported according to section 6.3 of the current contract.
Mr. Plunkett, I can answer too, I think you, you had a question about three through seven, I think we talked, I, I'm suggesting that we probably just talked about those, those items that you were interested in regarding 5.4 and the fuel surcharge. That's language that's probably unique to River Falls and it's an advan- advantaged to the city because it raises the bar pretty high before we'd have any fuel surcharges from the hauler. I think in their other contracts and certainly in contracts that have been proposed, they would like to see more of a tiered approach to, as diesel price goes up. Certainly, you could make the argument that some of that then is baked into the cake of the flat price. And I wouldn't necessarily deny that, that that's approach that we've taken, the councils suggested in the past that they prefer a more level monthly set price rather than fluctuations in price over time, which could be achieved if there was more. If the commodity prices were indexed and if diesel fuel was indexed, that certainly potentially could bring the unit cost down, the base unit cost, and then you'd build from there, but we've, we've chosen an approach that's more of a flat fee, which we still think is competitive.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you for splitting that point in 5.4. That still doesn't get into the issue in 6.3 regarding the reporting on those recycled materials. As well as if that paper that is getting collected in River Falls is being contaminated and is unsuitable for domestic mills. And I know that the recycling industry for a long time dealt with that contamination by shipping those products to China in some sort of perverse reverse mercantilism kind of idea where we ship raw materials to other countries and import manufactured goods back with the loss of American jobs. So yeah, I'd, I'd like to look at that material that should have been available in 6.3 and examine that. And maybe talk with other facilities in the area that have a more reliable method of collection that results in less contamination of paper products, making it suitable for domestic mills and production.
Okay, does any other council members have anything on this?
Mr. Mayor, may I call the question?
Yep. All, all in favor of calling the question?
Hi.
Christie, can you, Christie, can you take a, can you take account on all in question, call the question, all in favor of calling the question?
Certainly. Mr. Watson?
Hi.
Plunkett? Beerstead?
Hi.
Morissette?
Hi.
Gagne?
Hi.
Downing?
Nay.
Odine?
Hi.
Five to two with all voting in favor except for Mr. Plunkett and Downing.
Okay, the first and the second on the number three, resolution approving advanced disposal contract extension. Christie, could you please take a call on that?
Yes. Mr. Morsett.
Hi.
Watson.
Hi.
Good. Gagne.
Hi.
Dean. Hi.
Beerstead.
Hi.
Downing. Six one with all voting in favor except for Mr. Plunkett.
Okay. Thank you, Kristi. Okay, next move on to our report on the review of resolution number 6501. This is a resolution relating to the COVID-19 public health emergency recommending the use of face coverings in public in the city of River Falls. And AZ is online, AZ is online with us, correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I believe she is. It may take just a second to move.
That's fine, Jason. Thanks. So if council has questions on this?
And just for clarity, Mayor, if I may?
Yep.
Do those questions have to be pertaining to that agenda item directly?
Well, it has to be, oh, yeah. Well, I mean, about COVID in the city. Hang, hang on. Let's let her get on.
It, it looks like she's here, sir. And I'm, I'm just gonna step out of the way because I'm sure she's the important one you guys want to hear from. And she knows that you guys probably have, are ready to fire away.
Okay.
And Mayor, we're here, and we're available too as staff if you have questions regarding the city's response or policies.
Okay, thanks, guys. AZ, are you there?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes. Thanks for joining us.
Yeah, of course. Jason and Scott tell me to be available. I'm available.
Okay. Who wanted to go first?
I would be willing to, Mayor.
Yep, go ahead, Mr. Downing.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I just wanted an update on how contact tracing has been going in our area. I know in bigger cities and larger areas, I've heard some difficulties, but I imagine we're doing considerably better because we are less, have less density here.
Uh, contact tracing is going okay. Um, the vast majority of people that we talk to are very respectful and cooperative. We have had a number of cases and it seems to kind of go in spurts that people have been refusing to call public health back or provide any contacts. So that does, that does happen fairly often. We try everything we can to work with people to get voluntary compliance. We're still able to follow up with cases seven days a week within 24 hours of the test result. We normally do it within a couple hours of getting the positive test result and follow up with their close contacts within the next 24 hours after the disease interview.
How is the transition with college students coming back been going as far as what you've noticed?
Well, it's been going well so far, at least in River Falls. I can't say that for all the campuses. We have a contact tracing team of UWRF staff of six people who are available 20 hours a week each doing contact tracing for UW staff. So Pierce County gets the case first. We do the initial disease investigation to understand exposures off of campus, to understand if they may be working off of campus to determine the infectious period and likely source of infection. Then we pass it off to the UW team and they've been doing a really good job.
Sounds like you have good cooperation. I like to hear that. Thanks, AZ.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Sorry, I'm sorry. I keep forgetting to unmute myself. Who'd like, who'd like to go next? Yep, Mr. Plunkett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you, AZ, for being here. Regarding the university and the school openings, I realize that this is, you know, somewhat early here, a week, but in some other areas, Madison and Eau Claire, we've seen some significant problems. It's my understanding that we haven't seen that level of problems here yet. What have we seen and what should we be expecting regarding this?
Sure. So I will acknowledge that things are going very poorly for UW Madison and UW Eau Claire right now. They have seen significant numbers. And I spoke with both the Madison Dane and Eau Claire City County Health Officers this morning as well as the La Crosse City County Health Officer, and they are definitely struggling. They're a week to two weeks ahead of us just because of their timeline for bringing students back. They are at their maximum as far as infrastructure for disease investigation, contact tracing, quarantine and isolation. What we've seen so far in River Falls, we've tested about 260 students either for antigen testing or PCR testing. We have four positive antigens, four positive PCR tests. Those are separate people. So we're at a less than, less than 5% positivity rate. We're around 3% if you count both PCR and antigen testing together. So we're doing pretty well, but it's, it's early for sure.
Could you clarify what PCR and antigen tests are and why they're used?
Sure. So PCR is the gold standard of COVID-19 tests. So what that does is it, it's a molecular test that's diagnostic that actually looks for the RNA of the virus. So that's the initial test that came out. That's what the CDC uses. That's what the Wisconsin State Lab of Hygiene uses. That is the best test that we have available for COVID-19. The problem with that is you need a clear complex certification in order to do that test and it's quite expensive. It's about $100 per test. What has recently come on the market is a number of antigen testing machines. So that is looking for a protein that is associated with the virus. And that is a much less accurate test. It tends, it has a propensity for false negatives, in particular for symptomatic individuals. So UWRF is really using that in a way that is approved by me and the State Lab of Hygiene as a point of care diagnostic test for people with symptoms. So we give them the antigen test. If they're positive, they're probable, not a confirmed case, and we go ahead with isolation. If they're negative but symptomatic, we follow up with a PCR test to confirm that it really is a presumed negative. They're also using antigen testing on campus for close contacts to make sure that they are not infectious when they're released. And they're also using it for some surveillance of asymptomatic students in the general population. So gold standard PCR testing, that's the one we send away to a lab. That's the ideal that we want to use, but it's slower and more expensive. So we're using antigen, which is a protein test, that point of care for screening and to do some asymptomatic surveillance.
Thank you. Nope. Okay. Oh.
I just had a question for AZ real quick. I noticed on all the reports that we get that Pierce County includes confirmed and probable cases. And St. Croix only does the confirmed cases. What's really the difference in why we're doing, or why Pierce County is doing confirmed and probable versus just confirmed? And is there a way to split that?
If I clarify for you, AZ, real quick, and those are internal staff reports that we pull from your dashboard and from St. Croix County's dashboard.
Okay.
Sure. So probable cases are really important for a number of reasons. They were really important in the beginning of the pandemic when we were only able to test the very sickest people because we had a lot of cases that we had high clinical suspicion based on their, their symptoms and their history of exposure that they did have COVID-19. But because of the lack of capacity for molecular testing, we couldn't confirm the diagnosis. So that was really important. It's now very useful now that antigen tests are on the market that if someone is symptomatic and they test antigen positive, they are a probable and not a confirmed case. There has been not a lot of movement on the federal level about how to digest kind of both these case types together. And that's something we're definitely pressuring the CDC and Wisconsin State Health Department to look at. But I believe that reporting them both, but reporting them separately is really important to give us a better picture of disease in our county. There are a number of different ways you could be defined as a probable. And I'm happy to share the case definitions. They're quite complex. I don't want to go over them now. But I'm happy to share them with Jason and to share them with, with council members so that they understand kind of the different ways that someone could be determined a probable. So another way that someone could be determined a probable, just for instance, is if you're, live in a house with a confirmed case and you develop symptoms that give us a high clinical suspicion that you have COVID-19 during the exposure period of your household contact, but you refuse to be tested, you just don't want to be tested because your symptoms are mild. We might determine based on consultation with our medical advisor and the State Health Department, that person is a probable case as well.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Watson?
Can I follow up?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
If I could ask, Jason, if we could kind of separate those in our dashboard from probable to confirmed? I think that would give definitely me some more clarity. I know I can go up and pull the information off of their sites and I have looked at those sites. But it'd be nice to have our information reflecting kind of accurately, apples to apples compared to St. Croix County. If we're gonna.
I, I, we can, and, and I have no, no issue with doing so. I think it comes with a caveat that one of the reasons when staff is putting that together, that they are lumped together is, is it, it makes the math work. So if you double check the arithmetic, arithmetic, the totals work out. When we, when we delineate between the two, the math may not work when you're looking at it. You're gonna say, wait a minute, those don't sum equally. So as long as we have that, that caveat out there, and I'll include a disclaimer on the, on future reports so you understand what I'm talking about, but, but just, um, it just, it doesn't, it, it may cause one to question the totals, that, that two things aren't adding up to equal the total.
So is St. Croix County including probable cases under that confirmed and just calling them confirmed?
No. St. Croix County is not counting probable cases on their dashboard.
Gotcha. So I'll reiterate, I'd like to see some separation. If you do want to include confirmed with probable, I'd like to see another slide there that says just probable, so we can separate that. I, I wouldn't want to include a probable case just because we think it is, doesn't mean it necessarily is. Right? I could go down the street and say that tree has Dutch elm disease because some of them around it do, but until you run a test and it comes back positive, I mean, you can't really say that's what it has until there's absolute proof of it.
I think in terms of providing you a visual infographic, I'm happy to prepare it, however, with the pleasure of council, and that, that's not an issue whatsoever. I think in terms of whether probables are to be included or excluded, I would defer to AZ.
Yeah, so probables, especially because of the testing protocol that UWRF is using for speed and for cost, you're definitely going to want to look at the probables because my suspicion is a majority of the positives that we get will be from antigen testing, which we won't for cost reasons, usually confirm with a PCR. So you're going to want to keep a close eye on those probables.
So I, I, I'll, I'll be completely vulnerable here. Back in July, I got pretty sick for two weeks. I went in, I got tested, I got tested negative. I've been sicker than I ever was and I excluded myself. I didn't go out. I didn't do all the things that I wasn't supposed to be doing. And if I did go out in public for a short walk, I put a mask on. My, my thing though is would I have been considered a probable? Because I might have been around some people. I was on a plane five days before that, right? So you, you ask these types of questions and that's where I'd want the separation, right? So are you including me at that point as a probable? You didn't because you didn't have that information. It wasn't public. But my question was, would those folks be considered probable when that's not completely accurate? And I want to see accurate numbers, I guess, is what I'm saying.
You would not have been considered a probable in that case just because you were sick. Only if you would have had a documented exposure within your incubation period to a confirmed case of 19, just not just a passing exposure, but really a close contact type of exposure.
So how, how, how are we separating that though? I mean, from a probable, like, hey, it is, we think it is, but we don't know versus a confirmed case. I mean, that tells me that it's not accurate reporting.
Well, ideally, we'd love to, we'd love to get everyone PCR tested, but that's just not, that's just not a reality. And we are very careful before we count someone as a probable to confirm that an exposure actually happened and that their symptoms are, give us a high index of clinical suspicion. And I can tell you from those that we have counted as probable and then have subsequently gone in to get tested, we have almost never been wrong that we, we got it wrong and that they really were a negative. They've almost always been positive when they've gone on in for subsequent diagnostic testing.
And I, and I appreciate what you had to say, but we're going off assumptions, not actual facts of these probable cases. And we're including them as a, this is our number for Pierce County or River Falls for that matter. You know, so it's kind of lumping those together and saying, we got 357 COVID cases when we, we don't necessarily have 357. Or 46 current cases. We could have 36, right? But you, we're including 10 other probables or whatever the numbers would add up to be. That's just my concern. I like accurate reporting, correct?
Okay.
That's it. Thanks.
Okay. Diane, or actually Hal, you had said something first, and then we can go to Diane.
Thank you. Ms. Snyder, I'm curious to know whether you've seen any effect with the governor's masking order since that has gone into effect, if there's been any trend changes in the numbers that you've seen.
So it's probably too soon to tell. Additionally, it's very hard to tell just based on Pierce County sample size. Anecdotally, our cases have been going down in recent weeks, but I can't, I can't scientifically attribute that without a counterfactual to the masking mandate.
And do you, do you believe that the masking mandate as it's currently been laid out is, is adequate for its intended purpose? From your.
You mean the way it's written?
Yes.
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Odine?
Yes, I just wanted to confirm with Ms. Snyder that my understanding is this is, this is a disease where, you know, accuracy is really difficult to to grab onto because there's so much we don't know about it. Someone made test negative after having already had it. We don't know how long any immunity is going to last. And I was just wondering if, if, you know, further accuracy as to probables versus confirmed cases would influence how you handle those cases?
That's a great question. So again, we are very careful before we declare someone a probable. We really take a look at the details around the exposure, the details around their symptoms. And you know, if we, if we talk to our medical advisor and the nurses and they say, you know what? I think this person has a cold. We don't count them as a probable. We really have to have a pretty high index of clinical suspicion based on both symptoms and exposure that they are a probable or based on an antigen test. We handle them no differently as far as contact investigations. Probables are just as much work, and I would say sometimes even more work than confirmed cases. We do all the same contact tracing, quarantine, isolation and case monitoring. Again, because we, we believe we have high clinical suspicion to believe that this, this person is a case of COVID-19. And we've found from experiences with other diseases like pertussis or tuberculosis that not taking probables seriously when there's a high index of clinical suspicion and a history of exposure is not effective from a public health standpoint. So we, we have to take probables with the same amount of gravity that we do confirmed cases or we could, we could get into a real problem.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I have a question.
Council members that haven't asked a question yet? Otherwise, go ahead, Mr. Downing.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, AZ, is there a percent of infection rate that you believe is not properly being recorded? I understand. I understand because of lack of finances, it makes it difficult for a lot of people who think that they're probable or know there's something very wrong with them that lists many symptoms, don't go in when they should. Does the CDC or local county departments have an estimate on the percent of people that would fall into that category?
We don't have the estimate of the percent of people that should ideally go get tested and don't. I know of a couple of people I talked to today that I tried to convince go get testing, and they weren't able to for a number of, of reasons. So I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have accurate information about that number.
It's okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead, Jason.
I'd like, I'd like to go back to Councilman Gagne for just, just a second, because I don't, I don't want to commit on something I can't deliver. And as, as, as the discussion's been going on, I visited the dashboard, and I want to make sure that I clarify something. I think one of the more important metrics, I believe, for you to consider and for us to report to you on is the weekly numbers, so we can monitor whether we're seeing a decrease for consecutive weeks, because I, I believe that's how we're gonna, if and how, we're gonna make staff recommendations to potentially move from phase two to phase three at some point is based on seeing sequential weeks decrease. So, but Pierce County's data on their dashboard, those probable and actuals are combined for their weekly measures. I cannot delineate between the two, so, so I would not be able to report out a delineation on those two, because I'm just relaying what they have on their dashboard.
Okay. Thanks, Jason.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep, go ahead, Mr. Gagne.
So I would reiterate, you know, to the Pierce County that I'd like to see them numbers split at some point, what your number is for probables versus confirmed. I think that would give some clarity and some accuracy in reporting versus just going, we think this person has it, but we have no actual proof that it's a confirmation, unless you have a test that comes back positive. You know, if you, if you think you're pregnant and you got a big belly, are you actually pregnant? Let's run some tests and find out. I mean, I know it's not the same. COVID's a very intricate, we're learning as we go, but that, I think that exactly tells us why we need to be separating those numbers for our community members to actually know that these are the confirmed cases and these are the probable cases that we think might include in there. That, that being said, I, I guess I'll rest at that. I just like accuracy. I like it to be clear for folks.
Anybody else have anything on this?
Yeah, I've got...
Yep, go ahead, Mr. Plunkett.
Mr. Mayor, I heard mention going from our phase two to phase three. What are we looking at if this does happen to go the other way? Do we have a metric for what level of cases we should be looking at before reenacting other restrictions, especially as it relates to the U and the school for part A and then for part B? I'd like more information on what we're seeing in the latest information for health impacts for those who survive this infection.
AZ, do you want to take part B and staff will take part A, I think?
Sure. So we're still, evidence about the long-term health impacts is still very much emerging. We are seeing some recovered cases months later are reporting to us, some remaining chronic fatigue and some decreased lung function. Disturbingly, we've also seen some data coming out about young, healthy athletes who have recovered from COVID-19, having some cardiovascular inflammation, which is concerning. And again, this is only emerging evidence, but something that health departments are definitely keeping a close eye on. There is that, that pediatric syndrome that you may have heard about, widespread inflammation in the body. There have been a few cases under investigation in Wisconsin for that pediatric syndrome, none in, none in Pierce County.
Councilmember Plunkett, does that answer part B?
Very much, I appreciate that, AZ.
So for part A, I understood the question essentially to be, what's, what's the dial turning, so to speak, to go to either phase three or phase, back to phase one, so to speak? Is that how, I understand that correctly?
Phase one or other measures that may be more appropriate? I understand that, you know, phase one was something that we did in the very initial stage of this, when we did have the information that we have now about method of transmission and what activities were likely to lead to spread and what activities were not.
So from a, from a city standpoint, we still are operating under the Crushing COVID, which is a guide, as it says, which was based primarily on the kind of a three-step program or three-phase program laid out originally by the state of Wisconsin. There has been a significant amount of discussion between public health and cities, including Pierce and St. Croix County and the city of River Falls about, is that the phasing or the dialing that we want to use? There's different methodologies or methods out there regarding metrics and dashboards and how we're going to do that. So I would say there's still significant discussion about, is the current dashboard the right dashboard and does it make sense for us to, to turn the dial according to that? On, under, my understanding is we, under the emergency order, essentially, we've set out our plan with kind of some goalposts, so to speak. There is the opportunity for us to go to kind of 1B or something in between 2 and 1. There's certainly the opportunity for us to not go all the way to phase three, which essentially in our plan is kind of opening back up, you know, as normal. So there might be a 2B or 2C or, or something in between 2 and 1/2, 2 and 3/4 or something. And we are relying heavily on the advice of public health related to how that would work. We specifically are, are going, I think, for our staff and our city operations, we've tried to give staff the idea that we think at best will be in phase two for the remainder of the 2020 calendar year. So just so you understand kind of how we expect to be implementing, we, we don't expect to be going to in-person council meetings or changing, having, you know, our annual employee dinner or things like that any, any time in 2020. And then we're going to revisit that around Thanksgiving time to kind of talk about the next three, four months. And we do that in consultation with, with Pierce County Public Health, but, and, and St. Croix. So essentially, the, under the emergency order, the mayor, with the advice and guidance of staff and, and county health, can kind of let the council know that we're moving to phase one or to phase three. And the variations in between would be things that we would do through different parts of the emergency order. So it's not a good example, but, you know, we made changes regarding hours for the dog park, we made changes related to parking downtown. So there's, there's kind of little bits and pieces that are done with separate orders, and I would imagine that that's a possibility where, right now, we're at gatherings of 50 outside and 10 inside. If there was any advice from county that, okay, we're fine with 100 now, I don't think we'd wait to go to full phase three where everybody can just gather and let's have River Falls days. We, there may be a, not may, there likely would be then a revised Crushing COVID plan put in front of the council that says, here's, you know, we're gonna change our mass gatherings or the rules regarding the, the park shelters or council meetings or things like that. So does that answer the question? I think we, we are looking, Mr. Plunkett, specifically at the dashboard we have, we're, we're looking at it all. And then after we get done looking at it, we say to Pierce County and St. Croix County, are we looking at this correctly? Should we be optimistic or should we be pessimistic about what we're seeing? And we're having that discussion on a weekly basis. Right now, there's some general optimism, but it's extremely cautious, given the fact that we're a university community, and we've seen, we've seen some concerns in other university communities that we are, could be susceptible to. So I don't know if I categorized that correctly, Jason. I mean, you've been right in the thick of things, but that's, that's how I see us turning this dial, so to speak, is in consultation with the mayor and the city council with advice and guidance from public health. And I, I think you did, and I think that Councilman Plunkett's point, the, we don't necessarily have a specific numeric value targeted for moving forward or backwards. It's more the totality of, of the circumstances at the time with, with consulting the state's Badger Bounce Back Plan, local public health, and just our current situation.
Thank everyone there for your answers and the work that you're putting in on this.
Okay. Anybody else have anything?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I, I think I asked a question very similar to that, around those same lines, last time AZ was with us, as far as, you know, what, what's our main goal here? To not have one person get sick or flatten that curve, kind of like what the original plan was? I guess I'm still looking for some kind of information or confirmation from someone, and I know nobody really has that, and it's a hard one to gauge, but are we gonna just continue to, to ask people to lock themselves down and wear masks and do all that we, we believe is important? Or are we gonna start opening up and with the, the stuff that we've done and had great results? I mean, if we look at our numbers, I mean, our numbers are generally good when you look at the percentage of folks that have actually gotten sick to recovered and actual deaths in comparison to any others. And I know this, like we've heard before, that this COVID is a little bit more deadly or dangerous as far as being able to get it quicker, but it'd be nice to get some clarity on that, I guess, in the, the broad scheme of things, before we continue to lock people down and inflict harm on their lives. So I guess I'll leave my stuff at that.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Okay, thanks, AZ, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, happy to attend anytime.
Thank you very much. Okay, next we have the administrator's report. So anybody have any questions for Scott? Scott, did you have anything extra for us outside your report?
Uh, no, I don't.
Okay. Mr. Beerstead?
Move to adjourn.
Hey, Christie, we have a first and a second to adjourn?
Plunkett?
Hi.
Odine?
Hi.
What?
Hi.
Gagne?
Hi.
Hi.
Downing?
Hi.
Beerstead?
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks, thanks for all the extra tonight from all our extra guests. We appreciate it very much. Everybody stay safe. Good night, everyone.
Thanks.